Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Voits?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dole?
Here.
Crockett?
Here.
Geske?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
We have a call. As always, we begin with the approval of the minutes. In fact, if you have the minutes from the January 6th, 2020 Board Meeting, hopefully everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I accept the motion to waive the reading of the minutes and improve them as presented by the board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crockett. Second by Geske. Roll call.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Voits?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole? Yes. Phillips?
Yes.
Motion curious. Public participation, is there anyone that signed up to address the board?
No one this evening, ma'am.
Uh, Village Presidents report just a couple items tonight. We have an appointment, we have a position on the countywide GIS Advisory Committee. This is an appointment that Ryan Marion has occupied for the last couple of years and they've had a number of meetings over the course of the last couple of months because the county is in the process of hiring a new company to do a new GIS flyover where they actually fly over the county and take, you know, take photographs and then upgrade the GIS system that the county keeps on their website for the, you know, or keeps records of all the, all the homes and houses and buildings and everything that are on there. I believe they upgrade it every five to seven years and this is the process that they're going through now. The, Ryan has attended a number of the meetings, but as we found out at one of the meetings the other day, that a lot of the appointments are only for two years and that they had expired, so we need to appoint our representative there again and send a letter officially having him be our representative for the GIS Advisory Committee. So at this time, I'd like to make the appointment for Ryan Marion to serve on the GIS Advisory Committee and I would accept the motion. Motion by Voits, second by Martin, all in favor, signature by I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Uh, the only other item I have is that we have a request for the Mantino High School Girls Softball for a mulch sale. They have submitted the fundraiser application and filled out all the proper paperwork to, uh, to do that. They, well, it says here that they'll start selling it on January, December 21st, I believe that that's when they filled the paperwork out. Uh, they'll, they'll probably actually be doing it the next few weeks, hopefully when the weather's halfway decent. Uh, but they have submitted all the proper documentation and I would like to, to motion to approve the fundraiser application for the Girls Softball Mulch Sale.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Noel, second by Crockett. Uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Village Ministers, report, Mr. LaRocque.
Tonight we have Sarah Marion, the President and CEO of the Mantino Chamber with some exciting news, with a new update for us.
Thank you for having me tonight. Yes, I'm here to share, uh, some exciting news on the Chamber's behalf. This morning, we launched our brand new logo. Um, the, the logo is, um, just to better reflect Mantino's business community. Uh, the branding strategy amplifies the Chamber's vision and it will be integrated into all Chamber platforms and publications in the months ahead. The logo was inspired by the Second Street mural, uh, which is called Perspective. The mural itself was created to represent our town from a unique viewpoint. Just a little history on the mural, uh, the, the vision came from Casey Meyer, the art teacher at Mantino High School, and from there it was, um, turned into a community art project. Community members were invited to come out and help paint the mural, so it was a collective effort by, um, everyone who volunteered their time. So, the, the Mantino Chamber logo brings in elements of that mural. Uh, the vibrancy of the logo portrays our thriving business community and the circle inside the M signifies the unity of our members and the community. As a whole, it is encompassing the belief that our businesses are linked with the community on a significant level, and as you can see, it's on the screen there. Uh, a town really cannot be based on living spaces alone. Businesses are the heart. And so, um, with that, we present our new logo, um, and we're really excited about it and we hope that, you know, you can kind of see that vision as well.
Yeah, it is projected on one of the T, the TV screens if the, if the cameras can, uh, zoom in on that. Uh, and, you know, I saw, I've seen it, uh, a couple times today. I know you had it, you announced it and, uh, it's a lot different than what the, you know, Chamber had in the past. Uh, you know, I think it's great that, uh, the Chamber and the Village work so closely together where now the Chamber's logo is even taken from one of the Village murals, so, um, you know, I know that there have been a lot of great comments of, not only about the logo, but just about the Chamber and the Chambered relationship and, you know, the things that, uh, that they've done for the Village of Mantino and for all the business community around, so this is just another, another new thing for 2020.
Yeah.
How long has this been in the works?
Uh, quite a while. We started talking about it, uh, last year and we wanted to really launch something special, um, at the start of 2020, but really, I mean, if it weren't for the Village's support, I'm not quite sure how thriving our Chamber would be. So, we really do work hard to work together and, um, you know, it shows, so we're proud of that. Um, as of date, we're 195 members strong. We're striving for that 200, so, um, if you're interested in being a member, uh, you can go to our, uh, website at mantinochamber.com and kind of find out more there. Um, you're also certainly welcome to stop at my office at Village Hall, um, to find out more about becoming a member and supporting our organization. So, I'm, in other news, we've got an exciting event coming up Saturday. Uh, we are assisting the Kankakee County Chamber of Commerce with their big event called Taste Fest. Um, that will be held at Steam Hollow Brewing Company Saturday at January 25th, and, uh, we are happy to help them with this event as it is taking place here in Mantino. Uh, the tickets are on sale at kankakeechamber.com. General admission includes one tasting card, which includes 10 tastes. We have over 14 restaurants that will be in attendance from all over the county. Uh, it's $35 per person, but if you're a Chamber member of the Mantino Chamber or the Kankakee County Chamber, you get a discount and that's $25, uh, per ticket. Reserve seating is also available. You can find out all the information at kankakeechamber.com. And you also can buy general admission tickets at the door, but that's only while supplies last, so you might want to get there early. The event's from 4 to 7, so, again, you can find all that information at the Kankakee County Chamber website, so.
Any questions for Sarah? Well, and the, the, the County Taste Fest, I think is a good example of the Mantino Chamber working with the Kankakee Chamber. I know you worked with Emily all the time and you used to work with Barbie, uh, you know, that's the, the Chambers working together, and I know you have a lot of members that are not, you know, that don't, aren't from Mantino, but they're business, they do business with people in Mantino, so, uh, the relationship that you have throughout the county and with all the other Chambers and, you know, the, you know, the CBBS and all the other, uh, entities that there are, Sarah's, you know, that every event there is throughout the county, it's not just a Mantino effect, and I think it shows that, you know, Mantino is involved in, you know, pretty much every activity that takes place throughout the county, even though it might not be located here. The nice thing this weekend is that the Steam Hollow, having that facility, does bring some, uh, some new events to be able to come and actually have them in Mantino, so that's great that, uh, everybody, you know, the town will be, uh, hopefully full of those people that are coming to the Taste Fest this weekend.
So, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Uh, Committee reports, Mr. Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Voits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item tonight. It's ordinance 1934, an ordinance authorizing Title VI Public Ways and Properties by adding Chapter VIII Lakes, Ponds, and Retention Ponds, Detention Areas of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. Chris, want to touch on basis about this, you kind of brought it to our attention and...
Yeah, this is something that's come up through our insurance carrier, other, there've been some fairly large settlements from people drowning through ice fishing incidences or swimming, wading, uh, in ponds where they're not supposed to, so. The Village actually owns three ponds in town, um, just to the west side of Spruce Street and Eagles Landing, across the street in Winfield to the east of Spruce Street, and then there's one in Legacy Park. Those are the three that we have jurisdiction over. We have signs up there now saying that you can't swim or wade or ice fish, uh, but this gives us the ability to find people if they continue to do something or, or get caught out there when they're not supposed to be, so, um, again, it's, it's not that we're trying to limit, uh, people enjoying the town, but, uh, it's, it's a very dangerous thing. It's okay to fish, uh, from the shore, we just don't want people going out on the water or ice, so.
Uh, my next Public Works meeting is on, uh, 1/28 at 7:00 AM at the Village Hall Conference room, and that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Voits, uh, Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, my next meeting, well, first up, Jim, what, Megan, let's talk about the ice skating rink.
Yeah, the, uh, the rink's been open for the last few days. Sunday was extra cold, uh, today warmed up a little bit, the sun too, but, um, sun going down, the temperatures definitely, uh, dropped as well. Uh, I think we're calling for a little warmer temperatures later on this weekend, but, uh, a couple of extra days. I know there's been a lot of kids out there, uh, last night, and then again, I have a lot of people on the, on the ice again tonight as well, so.
Perfect, that's good. Our next meeting's, uh, March 18th and, uh, 7 o'clock right here, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I have a couple items on the agenda. One is Resolution 19-12, a resolution affirming the NWAACP's shared principles. Um, we had discussed at the Public Safety meeting, multiple police departments in the county have regular meetings with the local NWAACP chapter to facilitate better community relations and prepare policies and procedures for potential events. Adopting shared principles further that effort, which benefits all communities in the county. Chief, I don't know if you'd want to add anything to that, you've been working with this group for some time and, you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Uh, the shared principles came out of a conversation between the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police and NWAACP shortly after Ferguson, uh, to try to establish some common ground and shared beliefs, uh, to provide a better, uh, relationship between the police and the communities they serve, uh, and it's really, um, a first in the country to do this. It's basic stuff, and I won't read it all, but, uh, just for example, um, to agree that all persons should be treated with dignity and respect, that we value the life of every person, uh, build, uh, and rebuild trust, uh, endorse the values of community policing, uh, building strong relationships between law enforcement communities, uh, and supporting diversity and those type of things. So it's basic stuff, but it's good to put it in writing, uh, and like you said, we're trying to get, uh, every department in the county, uh, to sign on to it. We'd be the second county in the state to do that, uh, so, uh, I think three or four have done and we would like to do that tonight if we can.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or anything? Um, I have another, or, I have another item, ordinance 19-32, an ordinance amending Title IV Police Regulations, Chapter I, misdemeanor code, Article IV, offenses involving health, safety, and children by changing Section 4-1-4-14, sniffing and inhaling of intoxicant, intoxicated prohibited, and 4-1-4-17, possession of cannabis or drug paraphernalia of the municipal code for the Village of Mantino. This is another one that we had, um, this provides additional amendments to the portion of our police regulations that deals with cannabis and the consequences of violating the law. After the cannabis law was enacted, several issues were discovered that needed adjustments and those were amended at the state level. These amendments to our ordinance bring us back into compliance with the state law as amended, as we call this, as general housekeeping, right? So, any questions on that? I have a couple other things I want to talk about, uh, with the winter weather finally settling, the police, Mantino Police are responding to a lot of accidents due to poor road conditions. If you are involved in an accident, there are a few things to remember to stay safe. Make sure everyone's okay, then get off the road if you can. The safety of everyone involved in a crash is always your primary concern. Check on the occupants of each vehicle, then call for emergency assistance if needed. If the vehicles are drivable, get them off the road as soon and as carefully as possible, because leaving your vehicles in the road could risk somebody else's crashing into them. Stay in your car if you can't safely move away. If you can't get your car off the road, but you can get off the road, wait until there's no traffic around and then move well out of the way. Otherwise, stay in your car so you're protected from other vehicles. Stay visible and warm. Turn on your hazard lights and put all the road flares up so the vehicles will know something is wrong. And grab your vehicle emergency kit, which you should keep in the car at all times for blankets and extra clothing. If you've run off the road and you're still in your car, make sure nothing is blocking your exhaust pipe, otherwise carbon dioxide may build up. If you're stranded, stay put. Running off the road in a remote area is scary, but resist the urge to try to walk for help. It's very easy to get lost, especially during a storm, and during a storm, your car will be able to provide you with at least some shelter. If you see a crash, you don't always have to stop to help. Being a good Samaritan could cause more problems than it solves. If the people involved in the crash aren't in immediate danger, call 911 and let the professionals help with medical aid and traffic control. Also have a couple reminders from the Mantino Fire Department, uh, clearing snow from your fire hydrants. When winter is at its coldest, you may want to spend most of your time inside. However, it's important to keep an eye on what's happening outdoors too. Winter weather can create fire safety hazards such as ice or heavy snowplow that can obstruct fire hydrants. You can help reduce the risk by keeping fire hydrants accessible and clear of ice and snow. Why does this matter? In emergency, every second counts. Fire hydrants that are blocked, concealed, or difficult to access due to snow or ice impede emergency first response. Fire trucks carry a limited amount of water, so one of the first tasks upon arriving at a fire is to locate a water supply from the nearest hydrant. Hydrants covered in snow can be difficult to locate, and uncovering them can waste valuable time needed during a firefight. Keeping them clear may mean easier access to water and more time doing what really matters, fighting that fire. How to keep your fire hydrants clear? In addition to removing snow and debris covering the hydrant itself, the Mantino Fire District recommends clearing a three-foot area around the hydrant for easier access. The Mantino Fire District also suggests maintaining a shovel path from the street, the sidewalk, or driveway to the fire hydrant so that it's visible from the road and firefighters can easily access it. Who should clear the hydrants? While there are few hard and fast rules concerning who should clear hydrants, it's generally considered the responsibility of the occupants near the, the fire hydrant. Considering helping elderly friends, neighbors, or those with medical conditions to help keep these fire hydrants clean, as we say, it's just helping one another and making sure you're checking on your elderly and doing all you can do to keep everyone safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Crockett.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I have two items on the agenda this evening. Uh, the first one is ordinance 19-31, an ordinance amending Title X Subdivisions, Chapter VIII Required Improvements, Design and Technical Standards. Article 16 Public Utilities by changing Section 10-8-16 of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. ComEd recently announced that they, uh, are requiring electrical infrastructure be installed at the front of newly developed lots, or if rear lot installations are required by ordinance, they must be installed in conduits. This revision will require rear lot installations in conduit, which is more aesthetically pleasing while still meeting, uh, the new ComEd requirement. Um, Chris, Ryan, any comment on that item?
Uh, yeah, we decided to amend this just because of the, I'm sorry, the, the aesthetic part of it and also the potential for damage when they're in the front yard in the parkway area, so we think this is a better alternative.
Yeah, I think, you know, we talked about this at a couple of committee meetings, you know, the, if a new subdivision was developed, all the big ComEd electrical boxes would be out in the, in everybody's front yard, and I don't think that's what we necessarily want to see. Um, and then also being that they're out in the front yard by the curb, when the snowplows go along and throw snow into the yard, they'd be covering up the electrical boxes, so, I didn't think that was necessarily, you know, something that we wanted either, so, I'm not sure exactly why ComEd is instituting these new rules, but in order to keep the boxes located in the same places that they are now, in the rear of the house or, you know, back by the alleys or in the rear of the lot, uh, this new, uh, this new rule had to be, you know, installed. Uh, basically, the only difference is, is that, you know, the, the contractor has to, uh, put a conduit in so ComEd comes and then they just, they run their wire through the conduit to hook up to the house. So it's adding new, uh, requirements onto a contractor where it used to be done by ComEd, where if you call ComEd for service, they'd come, uh, and they'd, you know, run their, you know, run their line from their service box up to the house, they'd do a trench and, you know, put it in there. Uh, this, this is going to have to be done by a contractor, then ComEd will come and just push the line through the conduit that's, you know, that was provided by the company. I know there's a, a number of different communities that are doing the same thing, and I don't, I don't think anybody wants to see all the ComEd boxes sitting out in the, in the front yard.
Uh, the second item is ordinance 19-33, which is an ordinance amending Title VIII Building Regulations, Chapter I, Building Code, Article IV, Permits by changing Section 8-1-4Q of the Municipal Code, uh, for the Village of Mantino. The required review fees for commercial developments have been adjusted for many years. Uh, the cost of external reviews have continued to increase and this, this adjustment will put the review fees more in line with those, uh, with those current costs. Uh, Ryan, again, any comments, thoughts?
No, this is something we use for every commercial review, uh, we create an escrow account for the architectural and engineering fees, and obviously as the time goes on, things get more expensive and we like to have a more, a bigger retainer, and then if they don't go over that, we can just write them a check back, so, it's easier than invoicing them.
Our next Plan and Zoning Committee meeting was canceled, that was originally scheduled for January the 28th. Uh, the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for February the 11th, 6:00 PM here in the Village Board Room. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Uh, Finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you, Mayor, I have ordinance 1930, an ordinance authorizing expenditure funds for the release of the reverter clause affecting 67 acres of properly located 7202 North 4,000 East Road, Illinois, Illinois. We discussed this in the last spending committee meeting, and, uh, it's on the agenda this evening. Uh, in addition, I have payment of bills in the amount of $115,204.24, which does not have any tip bills, no bills, no, um, bills authorized or paid between board cycle and our next finance committee meeting scheduled for February 12th at 7:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Geske. Uh, General Government, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 1911, a resolution of the Village of Mantino adopting an anti-arrestment policy for elected officials. That's all I have.
That means nobody can harass us?
That would be nice.
Joe, you want to talk a little bit about what...
Yeah, this was, uh, a new state requirement, uh, by statute, and the state just wants... Typically, your harassment policies are in your personnel manuals and they govern employees and they tell employees what they, what to do and how to report that. This is specifically, um, for elected official, unelected official harassment, so, again, it's a state statute, they're making you do it, they can't, there's not much you can do about it because you're an elected official, so they can't remove you from office even if it does happen, but at least it puts a procedure in place.
And it brings us into code with the state statute since they're required.
That's correct.
That's all we know?
That's it.
Okay, so tonight, the items that we'll be voting on in the consent agenda are as follows, uh, under old business, we have nothing, under new business, we have Resolution 1911, a resolution to the Village of Mantino adopting an anti-arrestment policy for elected officials. Uh, item number two is Resolution 1912, a resolution affirming the NWAACP's shared principles. Item number three is ordinance 1930, an ordinance authorizing expenditure of funds for the release of the reverter clause affecting 67.61 acres of land, commonly known as the Mantino Golf Course, 7202 North 4,000 East Road, Mantino, Illinois. Item number four is I, ordinance 1931, an ordinance amending Title X Subdivisions, Chapter VIII Required Improvements, Design and Technical Standards, Article 16 Public Utilities by changing Section 10-8-16 of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. Item number five is ordinance 1932, an ordinance amending Title IV Police Regulations, Chapter I, Misdemeanor Code, Article IV, Offenses Involving Health, Safety, and Children by changing Section 4-1-4-14, sniffing or inhaling of intoxicants prohibited, and 4-1-4-17, possession of cannabis or drug paraphernalia of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. Item number six is ordinance 1933, an ordinance amending Title VIII Building Regulations, Chapter I, Building Code, Article IV, Permits by changing Section 8-1-4Q of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. Item number seven is ordinance 1934, an ordinance amending Title VI Public Ways and Property by adding Chapter VIII Lakes, Ponds, and Retention/Detention Areas of the Municipal Code of the Village of Mantino. Finally, payment of bills, a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $115,204.24, which includes $0 from tip one. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted out individually? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to take a single roll call, go to the question of passage of the agenda items as rep.
I'll make it. Motion by Voits, second by Geske, roll call.
Voits?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion curious. I accept the motion to approve by admittance vote the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as rep. Motion by Martin?
I'll second that.
Second by Dole, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Voits?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion curious. Uh, comments tonight, we have to bring Mr. Voits.
No, sir, did another, nice job with that logo, really looks nice, really pulls it together, so, that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Second.
Mrs. Dole?
Thanks again for sending out the pop trucks, uh, that always makes a difference, uh, to move it out, move her out, makes me feel a little, a little softer, easier, and peace, so, the ice scares me, so, thanks, that's it.
Mr. Crockett?
Just glad we all have recourse now every time Wendell harasses us.
Mr. Geske?
Uh, just one item, uh, the Christmas lights, Jim, we talked about, uh, you know, we have turned off the season greetings, uh, signing on the, you know, at the farmer's elevator, um, but I know Sarah's got, uh, people that'll be going to come into town this weekend for the Steam Hollow, you know, that, I know he's spent an awful lot of time putting the lights up and that's why we like to enjoy them for a period of time after the holidays, so I think that, uh, you know, since, you know, we don't want to have, well...
you know, since we don't want to wear out the, the lights, I guess, leave them on this week for the people that are hopefully coming to town for the event at Steam Hollow and then we'll pull the plug next Monday. So if anybody wants to enjoy the, the lighting of Main Street and all the different Christmas lights and season greetings stuff that we've got here now, this is our last week and then after that, we'll pull the plug and next year when you put them up, there'll be even more, right?
Right.
So that's Monday, we go ahead and turn it down.
I have nothing further. I'll accept the motion. Do it, Joe.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crockett. Second by Geske. Roll call.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Voits?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
And so on.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, knowing you for watching.